So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Citizens wishing to speak. Limbodini is asked to speak today as we start to talk about items on the agenda. Under announcements, the Lamar Hunting 11th Annual Memorial Ride has benefited Georgia Sheriff's Use Association. Sheriff Gullis, do you want to come forward and talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, this ride, we needed an owner. Lamar Hunting used to be our jail administrator. We lost, this is the 11th annual one. It's going to be on September 13th. Registration begins at 8:30. Senior Senator across from the jail. Kick stands up at 10 o'clock. All proceeds from goes to support of Georgia Sheriff's Homes. It's a good ride. We usually have about 100 riders. That's police escorted. I don't know where we're going yet, but we'll find a good route and try to stay out of it.
You got any idea over those 11 years, how much money you've raised?
I don't. I wish to. If I knew about it beforehand, I'd get it for you. But it usually does real well. It's not, it's not a real expensive ride. It's like $35 for a bike. And like I said, we sell T-shirts and we usually give the T-shirts to everybody that comes and rides. And we have a dinner. We'll go somewhere deep lunch and then break up from there and everybody's on their own. It's always a good time. We try to bring some to kiss from the youth homes down so everybody can see where their money's going. Yes, last year, we rode two of the youth homes itself, so everybody had a good time with that.
That's it. Thank you very much for doing that.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I would like to have Michael Justice, if he'd come forward and talk about an event coming up this weekend out in our park.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I should point out to you that Pastor Franklin is also an employee of the county. He's worked with us for a number of years in Parks and Recreation at Mount Eagle Park. So, we're certainly glad to have him as a member of our staff. Very positive influence. This coming Saturday night, August 16th, out here, New Veterans Park, our first family movie night event that we'll hold here. The activities will begin about 7:00 o'clock. Movie probably won't start till 8:45 or 9:00 when it gets good and dark. Leave your pets and your alcohol at home. Bring your blankets, your chairs, and enjoy an evening with us. Supposed to be pretty weather, too, so.
Rio Two is the movie.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to invite Pete Giannis and Devin Seaball with Metro Atlanta Ambulance Service, talking about what all you're doing with Metro and Metro South of Kennesaw, Maryland. Mark Man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, guests. It's an honor to be here before you today. And I'm going to just give you a quick oversight, overview of what we've done here in Metro Atlanta as your new ambulance provider. There's some fast facts. On the 21st of December, we took over 911 for the ambulance service. We acquired Clark Ambulance Service and we retained 100% of the employees through the transition. We currently have, with our current operation and the folks that we gained through with Clark, over 150 residents or employees that live here in Paulding County, and we're very proud of that. Our ambulance service was the second, actually the third ambulance service in the Southeast to be accredited by the Commission of Accreditation of Ambulance Services. That is one of the highest honors that a service can receive. It's a tedious amount of work. It shows that you do not only clinical, but also that you focus on other pieces of operational excellence, and they consider it the gold standard. So, we're very happy to have that. And then, just so you have an idea of some of the other things that we do, we also have advanced life support, hospital-to-hospital transports. We provide critical care transports, bariatric transports. We work with the folks out of critical care air flight in Buonfide, and we do air transports with them also on the fixed wing side. We're not affiliated with anybody on the rotor wing or the helicopters, but on the fixed wing, we do several of the transports. And then, we do special operations. We are contracted as the NDMS folks, so when there is an incident going on, like Katrina or Rita, and the patients are flown into Dobbins Air Force Base, Metro Ambulance is in charge of doing the logistics work, not only to transport the patients, but also to find facilities to house them, et cetera. We do this with the Cobb Douglas Health Department, and we're very proud of that. So, that's essentially a few facts, fast facts about us. But I want to talk about what we've done here in Paulding. And you've probably noticed that the traditional ambulances have been changed. Our platform went to Mercedes after Ford decided that they would no longer be doing the E-Series. Everything we had up to that point was a Ford ambulance. And the diesel E-Series with the cutaway went away. And with that, we had to go out and basically do a search to find out what to replace it with. And we had our employees be a big part of that, and they had a lot of buy-in into it. And after we did a lot of reviewing, we found out that for performance, safety, and most importantly, the patient care in the back, because you know, you can imagine how important it is to be able to have a smooth, comfortable ride when you're performing a lot of the things that we do in the back of an ambulance. And the Mercedes Sprinter came out ahead and had a very good report. So, that was essentially one of the reasons we flipped over. We had, we had no choice. But we've got a lot of benefits out of it. It's a green vehicle. It's clean diesel. It gets about 14 miles per gallon instead of five, like our previous vehicles used to get. And the maintenance is much, much lower, so we're very happy with that. All our ambulances are fitted with ABL or GPS, however you want to call it, so we have a constant feed. We ping about every three to four seconds, so we know exactly where everything is at all times. We're able to perform a cookie trail, so if someone wants to know where's that ambulance been, we can actually backtrack it and find out where it's come from and what it's done that day. We've made some improvements also. We brought in, every ambulance here has the physio control from Medtronics Life Pack 15. That is considered the gold standard in EMS. It has every gadget you could possibly put on it, Bluetooth, et cetera. We're able to send EKGs via cellular wave to the hospital. So, eventually, when the hospital here gets to the open heart criteria, which I hope one day they will soon, we'll be able to send EKGs from the field, not only the Wellstar, Kennistown, or Cobb, but also out here, and be able to eliminate a lot of the time when there's a STEMI event going on or any kind of cardiac call. The next piece we have is kind of a, it's very unique. We're only one of three services in the Southeast that have it. We were the only one in Georgia. We were the first in Georgia to have it. And it is a CPR device that's also from physio, that does, as they call it, perfect CPR. It can deliver, you set the rate on however many compressions per minute, and it'll perform it. So, this is one of the things that we're looking at, that we're really pushing hard on, is patient outcomes. It's great to get there fast. It's great to get you to the hospital, but we want you to leave the hospital in the best possible condition possible. So, this device, which is new to the market, has really made an impact in our medical direction, which is under Emory Healthcare and the hospital system and university, is doing a white paper to show, once we get another year's worth of data, the improvements in the outcome of patients after they have gone through an episode where we've used the Lucas device to perform pneumatic CPR on the back of an ambulance. A last piece is a neolaryoscope, which is basically with fiber optics. It shows the tray going down, the esophagus, to be able to show if we've got a perfect insertion, whether we're doing ET tubes or anything that will enhance the survivability. So, we're trying to stay, stay out of a person's stomach, make sure we're in the right track. So, anyway, with this, we are, to the best of my knowledge, you're the only county that, along with Cobb, that has all three components. We're considered the gold standard in capital equipment, patient care. We also added and improved upon the Zoll computer software that we have. We use Zoll billing. It's all tied in together, so it's a very, very good piece of equipment to have, and it enhances our ability for reporting, which you'll see in a minute, what kind of reports we're able to pull out of this. Every ambulance also has DriveCam, which is basically monitors the driving. It's a camera system that continuously rolls, and if there's an event, a sharp turn or brake or an accident, it will show approximately five seconds before and after the accident, anywhere around the vehicle. So, if anything occurs, we'll, we'll know exactly what happened, and we can roll it back. And also, it also works on the behavior of the medics that are driving, because they actually know that they're being reviewed. And it's done by an outside source. We don't do it internally, so there's no bias involved. And these folks review their driving, and every, every medic's given a report card, so we know where they stand every month, and it kind of closes our loop on the safety part of the driving and the CPI part. And last but not least, I'm happy to announce, last week, we closed a 260 international highway, our first new station, and it's about a 7,500-foot building behind the hospital. And we're very pleased to have that, and we'll have our headquarters there, along with supplies, training, and a few other things. And we'll have, not the 24-hour ambulances running out of it, but the day units that will be running out of that station. We've put a lot of emphasis on training and education. We did a really, and I'm very pleased to tell you, with the deploy orientation, we did a lot of testing, OSHA complacency, which is something that if you don't stay on top of, it will mount up, and you'll end up being non-compliant, and you never know when you get a visit from somebody from the federal government. So, it's always good to stay ahead. You saw the King Vision Laryngoscope. You saw the compression system that we did for all the training. Again, we bring OSHA up because it's such a, it's becoming such a critical part of EMS operations, where you have to stay compliant at all times. We upgraded the EMS protocols with the Emory system. We also have a relationship with Wellstar. Dr. John Knox is our guy that's basically boots-on-the-ground. He works out of Paulding here, and if there are any issues, John is the first one to jump on it, to make sure that things are taken care of and with the right level of care. We've worked very heavily on patient documentation training, and you may ask, why is that such a big deal? Well, it is, because it's, the way that Medicare is going nowadays, insurance companies, if our paperwork isn't done correctly, they're going to roll it back to the citizen. So, it's very important that we do all, all our work right. And then, on the customer service, we want to make sure that we're good with you, with the level of patient care, but at the same time, we deliver optimum customer service. So, those have been our, our pieces. We unfortunately have had a couple of sashes with the snow that we've had up here and some of the other things, but it's been handled real well. We're very pleased with working with the fire department chief. Their folks have just done an outstanding job. We're honored to be working with you side by side. I don't know of really of any incident that with the snow or any of the other things that has gone on. We did lose one ambulance in an accident that were at the wrong place at the wrong time and got run into, but luckily, there was nothing wrong. That's another piece of the Mercedes. It's a very safe vehicle, and it's just a real tribute to the engineering that they've been able to perform. Some of our special operations, in case you see them around, we do a lot of special events around town. We'll be more than happy to do some of the, we're doing high school, but some of the other things you'll see is church events, charity events, any kind of festival that's been going on in either one of the cities. And we basically will do a new concept, which we started in Cobb, and I'm not sure how we are here in Paulding, but we call it a medic in a bag. A lot of the school systems were having issues raising funds because of the ambulance expense, not just here in Paulding, but anywhere else in the city, having issues with just how much it costs. So, we came up, we asked permission, well, if we had a paramedic with all the equipment, a paramedic, no vehicle, radios, et cetera, could they stabilize the patient and at that same time, reduce the expense substantially? So, we were able to bring the price down from over $400, which is the contracted rate, for example, in Cobb. I think in Fulton, it's five-something per game, down to under $100 per game. So, it was, it was the right thing to do. It was a win-win for everybody, and we're hoping that gets implemented out here, too. I know you can't see it, and I'm sorry. But we, we track all the responses. As a matter of fact, I can't see it. So, we track all the responses. And I mentioned earlier, Zoll, and this is the results of Zoll. We're able to pull reports like this, and I'll, I'll read it to you real quickly. This data is from the, from the 1st of January through July, and we have responded to 5,827 calls per service. Out of that, we've, we have made patient interaction 5,170 times. We have had an average response time of 7.8 minutes. The cardiac arrest, this is a very interesting fact, we have responded on 41. Of those 41, we monitor how many times the Lucas device that you saw was utilized. It was 28 times. There are some factors that prevent us from using it from time to time, but overall, the percentages are pretty good. We're able to use that for our reporting. We performed community services 19 times. We had 12 unseen standbys. We had eight police standbys, and we had 39 other events that we were with. Some of the interesting demographics that you'll see is that the average age for the... Yeah, you're right. We're going to break it down here. Well, most popular transport that we have are accidents, automobile accidents, as you can imagine. The next being sick, the third being breathing problems, and latter is being falls. So, those are, those are the main five categories. I don't go over this whole thing with you, but it's a very interesting report as far as to see what kind of calls we go on. We also document the streets where things occur. We know that over 50% of the calls are the people 55 years of age and older, and of that 55%, 3,033 were female and 2,100 were male. So, that's the breakdown, a little bit of the demographics of houses, of the age and the folks on the transport. That is where the accidents occur. So, we document on a map where accidents occur on the street. So, it kind of gives you a reading. If you're able to utilize it to modify the time it takes to change a red light or things of that nature, it's there. We provide it. And it's very interesting for us, because it enables us to decide where we put ambulances at what time of day, because we know, based on this, there's a history and there's a pattern of where accidents occur. So, we're moving ambulances constantly around to meet this demand, and at the same time, by doing so, we reduce the amount of time, of course, it takes us to get there. So, that's essentially where we are, and we're very happy with our partnership, of course, with Wellstar, and look forward to continuing our relationship with them. Any questions?
Pete, thank you very much. I think that's done without any kind of county subsidy, so.
Yes, there's no subsidy. We, we use nothing but user fees.
Now, Pete, thanks for being here. I wanted to state, I wanted to know how much an ambulance fully configured costs?
Right now, it's running right around $170,000. That's what those Mercedes fully equipped were of all the equipment. It's, it's about the same as when it was before. The Ford itself was more expensive vehicle per vehicle than the Mercedes, but because we have more equipment now in the Mercedes, the total price has gone up somewhat. The Lucas device, for example, those are around $13,000 apiece.
How many ambulances do we have in the county during the day and during evenings, roughly?
It doesn't really fluctuate too much right now. You have anywhere between six to eight. There are times when you have, when it gets very busy, and we roll resources in from Cobb, and you may have as many as 10 or 11. Our goal is to start putting out, now that we have a station that we can utilize for deployment by the hospital, which makes things very well for us logistically. You're going to see a lot more of the 12-hour variety. We're still going to have them around the clock, but this will be a way to enhance the response and the performance that we're delivering.
Any other questions? Good report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark, do you and Devin, either one want to add anything to that? No bid awards, no reports from committees and departments. Public participation on Agenda Items, any more? Then sign up, not come?
My name is Glenn Docrini. I live at 3 Indian Lake Court in Hyrum, and I'd like to bring up a point under New Business Discussion Item Six, that the Cobb County Tax Commission is going to retain 3.5% of the fees for collecting school taxes. Now, we are spending millions of dollars on our airport, millions of dollars on industrial parks, millions of dollars in county improvements, to bring about a change in the environment within Cobb County, I mean, within Paulding County. So, statistics, Paulding County ranks number 59 of all the school systems within the state of Georgia. That is the lower two-thirds. Of our high school graduates, by the age of 25, only 23% get a continuing education degree, where the state average is 29.8%. Paulding County lacks significantly behind our surrounding counties in technology advancements. I feel that the county taking extra money from the school system is taking away from the future of our county, and that the money that we will collect could be better used for our students than other purposes within the county. Thank you.
Next, we have the Consent Agenda Item, Discuss Actions on Two Consent Agenda Items. Number one, amend the June 24, 2014 Board Meeting Minutes. They're such a new that we're doing here. We're just adopting a change in the minutes, because it was a typo. Change order for modification of slopes drainage structures within the Runway 31 Safety Overrun Project at the Paul Northwest Atlanta Airport, as submitted by Plateau Excavation, the amount of $136,182.93, to reflect the amount actually adopted by the Board of Commissioners. Change order for modification of slopes and drainage structures within the Runway 31 Safety Overrun Project at the Paul Northwest Airport, estimated by Plateau Excavation, the amount of $176,856.60. Number two, recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the revision of the alcohol beverage license and permit schedule to an effective date of August 12, 2014. Would you like to move either one of these two items to regular session?
I do have a question. On alcohol licenses, there was, the only change was in the license where it combined the, what am I, the catering license? There was no fee changes or anything, correct?
That's correct. It was just merging the resident alcohol caterer license with the on-premise license. So, it wasn't an increase in the fee. We just merged those licenses together. Any other questions? No old business, under New Business, Discuss Actions About Resolution 14-18, Setting Millage Rates for the County Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you know, a few weeks ago, we advertised our public history, which, the first time in, last year, we had a small increase in our digest. This year, we did have an increase in our digest, and we have opted to roll the millage rate back. The 2013 rate was 8.22, and the 2014 rate will be seven, or is proposed at 7.267 mils. That is the amount to collect the same thing for, the exact same amount for the assessments as the assessments were last year. We'll collect no more taxes for the property debt there. So, unless you have any questions.
Number three, Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 14-20, Setting Millage Rates For the County Bond. I'm sorry. No, excuse me. Number two, Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 14-19, Setting Millage Rates For the Fire District.
Same thing. We are proposing that we leave the millage rate alone, because our fire department continues to grow. So, our millage rate for 2013 was 3.1 mils, and our millage rate for 2014 will be 3.1 mils, according to this resolution.
Any discussion? That was the, that particular fire tax was one that the voters, I just want to make a note, the voters did vote on that, to go anywhere from two to five mils in order to fund and support and grow our fire department.
That's correct.
Number three, Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 14-20, Setting Millage Rates For the County Bond.
The county bond millage rate is set in 2013 at 2.2 mils, and we're proposing the exact same millage rate that, it will generate approximately $6.5 million to pay the debt that currently exists within the county.
Any questions? Number four, Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 14-20, Setting Millage Rates For the Paulding County School District.
As you know, Board of Commissioners, we are the, you are the tax, you do establish the taxes for the county. So, the school board actually goes through their public, their own public hearings, and then they request what the millage rate should be to you, which received a letter, and they're leaving their millage rate the same. It was 18.879 mils in 2013, and they're proposing, they're requesting 18.879 mils again in 2014.
Any discussion? Okay, number five, Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 14-22, Setting Millage Rate For the State of Georgia.
The state of Georgia is reducing their millage rate by 5/100ths of a mil each year to get to zero. So, in 2013, it was 0.15 mils. In 2014, it's 0.1 mils. That's requested by state law. Like, next year, it'll be 0.05, and then it'll go to zero.
Any discussion? Number six, Discuss Action to Adopt Resolution 14-23, Authorizing the Tax Commissioner To Retain a 2.5% Fee For Blackting School Taxes.
As you know, the tax commissioner does send out tax notices. This cost goes to offset some of the cost in our tax securers office, as well as the collections in the tax commissioner's office, and it has, we've collected 2.5% in the past. And so, this is just a continuing the same, same process.
And this is a common practice in most areas, because again, it pays for the function of the tax commissioner.
That's correct. And it is less expensive for them to be able, I mean, they couldn't do their own, so it makes more sense to include them. And it's easier for the citizens as well. We kept one mil instead of a bill for each entity.
Any other questions? Number seven, Discuss Action to Adopt Budget For The Fiscal Year 2015.
As you know, at the last meeting, we had a public hearing regarding the budget, and since that time, we've made a few changes, and I'll go over a few of those with you. The library budget, which reduced by $33,000, because we did receive a grant, so there will be $120,000 in books purchased for the four libraries. The airport budget, it was mentioned that we had exceeded the budget in 2014, so that amount was increased by $100,000. The sheriff's budget, the school board agreed to reinstate four officers within the school system's budget, so they'll be paying for four additional officers to be at those schools for nine months of the year, which will allow us to hire three additional officers.
The difference in the three and four, they only pay nine months of the year.
That's correct.
And you'll have enough money to hire actual three.
That's correct. That's correct. And the cost and revenue for those are expected to balance out. The animal control budget, it was increased by $123,000. This increase came as we're... This increase came as a result of staff's recommendations to enhance this fay unit program and to increase the adoption. What we hope to do, we hope to start this process and see how it goes and for the different change, for all of the changes that have been recommended. The marshals, we, there was a question as to whether or not they should have three positions or two. They will only have two, but it will be for courthouse security here in this building or for admin security. The third, we did not remove the funding because those two positions are requiring this, or that requires additional time, as well as some of those funds will be used in the animal control budget to be able to better enhance that project. Does that make sense? And in the non-apartmental, we reduced the professional fees to an amount that is expected. And the Richland Creek Basin War, we reduced that by fifty thousand dollars. Those are in anticipation of us receiving a permit. And then we will, as you know, we've been awarded G belongs and we will begin a consultation, which will be the funding of a different source rather than this general funding. Revenues, I've gone back through, those are sometimes difficult because you have fines and fees that are coming from the courts. You have charges for services and those vary from year to year. But I went back through what we actually finished twenty fourteen with and increased some of our revenues because I don't think that they'll be reduced, that they'll come down. I think that's what we continue. So those are basically the changes that we have incorporated into this budget. In the back, I added an additional section of notes that was just for reference only. We're not really taking action on these, but it was requested at the public hearing, which is the IBA's budget. It's a draft budget, it's not approved. It's not balanced on the sheet. It's just to give an idea of where the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of our contribution goes. And then we have the water sewer system budget request, which is for additional personnel and for the equipment. The water sewer system is a little bit different because they're an enterprise system and it's a flexible budget. So if they don't have the revenues, they don't generate the revenues, they can't incur these bands. We have to balance that budget as well. They have to show an income of greater than a hundred and ten percent of their debt amount to be able to, to be able to make these purchases or add this to.
Of their debt type.
Of their debt payments, annual debt payments. One other thing that I wanted to mention is that since the last meeting, as you know, the airport lines did close. We did receive those funds. So I do have, we have been reimbursed from the airport authority for the expenses incurred in that contract, which I had presented to you an assumption that I would not have those funds for the end of the year, but it will be receivable because we received it August, the check was stated August first. You will end the year, we should end the year and we're still going through this process, but we should end the year without using fund balance in twenty fourteen. And we had originally budgeted a one point nine use of fund balance. And then I presented to you over the past couple of months that we've probably used two million dollars worth of fund balance. And now I can tell you due to this reimbursement and some other things that have come in, it looks like we'll break even. So give or take a little bit, but we should end the year. So it makes me feel better about using as much of our fund balance, which has been a topic of discussion through this process. We're using three point seven million dollars of fund balance, which is still a lot, can't do that year to year. But it does make me feel better to know. Just for point of reference, twenty thirteen went into the year at twenty-eight million dollars in fund balance and which works out to be about forty-seven percent of our expenses. And we will actually use this, we'll go down to about forty-one percent is what we're using. What we should have, if everything goes according to the budget, in twenty fifteen, we'll end the year at forty-one percent. So helps my feelings and I thought it would be interesting to you to have that information.
We try to make sure that we have on hand a rainy day fund of twenty-five percent.
That is the bare minimum.
And we have kept thirty-three, but now we will end the year, you said, at forty-one?
Yes, sir.
Mike, do you want to add anything to what Tabitha was?
I guess just the only thing I would add is just to clarify, I walked through this with, without, so when your budget, Mr. Terrance, was prepared and released to the public on June first, the assumption in that budget was that there would be twenty-six million dollars of available fund balance. Now there will be twenty-eight million dollars worth of available fund balance. So if you move forward with the budget that you have today, that's now presented to the full board with these changes that Tabitha's discussed, you'd be starting that budget two million dollars ahead of where you thought you were going to be starting, which is the point you made there, is if your budget, if you use all of the fund balance that you proposed to use, you will end the year with about twenty-four point three million dollars of fund balance or forty-one percent, well in excess of not only the minimum that we recommended as well.
Any questions?
We'd like to say that although there's maybe things in the budget we don't all agree with, I'd like to thank Mike and Tabitha for their work, the department heads, because they worked hard and went back and forth. And I sent them both an email this week to express that. Although we may not always agree on where everything's being spent, I know the efforts that you guys have worked hard, Mike, I appreciate your efforts. I appreciate the presentation that you gave three weeks ago. Had quite a few citizens to compliment on that. And so I'd like to thank you for that, Tabitha, for your efforts, because I know you're the backbone behind that. And just to let you know that I appreciate that. Is there one other thing, or are we going on to the next one?
When you get ready.
Okay. The only, the only question that I had over everything you discussed, and I don't want it to be a hardcore discussion, but raising that hundred thousand on the airport budget, that was kind of Mr. Graham's thing because we knew, we've all known that what we spent this year, we knew next year that what we were budgeting was not going to be enough for it. But I think the other part of his question was if that went over, whether or not we were going to continue to fund that out of general fund. So I had never gotten a clear answer on that. Were we given that four hundred thousand and then that's going to be it? Or are we just giving the four hundred thousand and then what we're going to do more after?
To clarify what my statement was and what Peter, they're two different things. I did recognize that, you know, you know that's not enough. You've got to have at least a hundred. But what I proposed was to eliminate the airport department and fund the airport authority just like you fund the IBA. But what you have in this budget is you're keeping the airport authority and you're funding them like any other department. So, you know, anything above your budget, you still got to approve, as long as it's below fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, it's not, what's here is not exactly what I proposed.
I guess, you know, if I add to that, bearing any unforeseen circumstances, we certainly will have a crystal ball to see, but hopefully that is the budget.
I guess my only comment would be, and I don't at all mean this to be negative, if they don't occur, having that extra expense, and it's not needed, that we just give the airport that much more money?
No, we, this is a department. This is not like the IBA. You don't write them a check. This is a department of the county, just like DOT is a department of the county. And we control those expenses. You're not writing a check to the airport department for this. This, we're still maintaining a department, airport director actually, or the department head of the airport authority actually operates the airport and actually answers and works for the airport department also. I mean, it's keeping it all the same, it just increased your internal department budget.
But that, that money can be used for whatever they choose to use for their budget. I assume.
No, no, it's, Tommy said, it's the same as any other department in the county, whether it's animal control or libraries. The budget itself is a guide, just what our anticipated expenses are. But if their expenses are three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, then twenty thousand dollars simply returns to general fund. If their expenses are five hundred thousand, it's because y'all voted to give them another hundred thousand dollars at some point during the year to fund some project. So the four hundred thousand is simply a budget, just like DOT or any other budget. So if their expenses get over, y'all have a hand in that, because three y'all said it should.
I've got to brag on the sheriff. He's returned money to us, I believe, every year.
Yeah, same as the sheriff's budget. The dollars that he gets at the end of the year, if he hasn't expended those dollars, those funds are simply returned back to general fund.
Number eight, discuss actions about resolution fourteen dash twenty-four, amending a moratorium on the acceptance of rezoning applications for all sewer developments within the Sweetwater Drainage Basin. And.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This was an agenda item that we discussed at the last commission meeting. This deals with a moratorium that was adopted in February of two thousand and seven that limited any residential rezoning requests requiring sewer for properties within unincorporated Paulding County within the Sweetwater Drainage Basin. That was put in place, like I mentioned, in two thousand and seven for twelve months or until both Paulding County and Cobb County have completed the necessary engineering for a Cobb-Paulding sewer line. The twelve months has definitely passed and as we stand right now, there are no engineering or acquisition of easements on the Paulding County side. However, the county owns and operates the Sweetwater Creek wastewater reclamation facility, which has a designated service area that has ample capacity to serve that area. So based on the sufficient supply of capacity, it's recommended to change that moratorium to exclude the area served by the Sweetwater Creek wastewater reclamation facility.
I think that that plant currently is operating at ten or fifteen percent of capacity.
Ten percent.
Ten percent. In looking at your map, is there a portion of, this is where the lines get funded, I guess that's Carroll County, is there a portion that we service that are censored or similar to what we do in the north end of the county that we service in Carroll County?
We don't presently have any sort of intergovernmental agreement that will allow that, but in terms of the geography out there, yeah.
So that's what these little lines, I mean, it shows an area that would fall into that.
I'm not sure what those lines are for. I think those are actually streets, or unimproved streets. But to answer your question, yes, there is some, a land area of Carroll that could, that could reach this plant, but we don't presently have any sort of agreement about it.
Any other discussion? Number nine, discuss action to adopt resolution fourteen dash twenty-five, identifying real property proposed for conveyance to the state for the purpose of constructing a new customer service center of the Georgia Department of Driver Safety, Chuck Rand.
Commissioners, I spoke with Mr. Rand. I'll handle just very briefly on this resolution. As y'all are aware, there's going to be a DDS customer service center in Paulding that we brought up on previous agendas. All this resolution does is basically designate with a legal description, the acreage that is going to be conveyed to the state for the purposes of the customer service center. The resolution indicates that we're going to give it to the state. However, if the state fails to operate the facility or fails to construct it, then we by D will have a first right of refusal to go back and reacquire the property to the county. The only issue that will come up requiring the county to pay any money for that is in the event that the state has actually made any improvements to the property. The purchase price would be the fair market value of those improvements. The resolution also has a provision in it that states that the county will provide public road access to the facility. Happy to answer any questions y'all may have, or Mr. Rand may?
So the, I know that of course, the public, we've got to improve the street and then we're actually doing the site. So if for some reason they were to cease having a DDS there, we would only, according to the D, we would have to pay them back for pad rigging site, which is, or any of the improvements we did providing sewer to it or anything, strictly what they spend on the facility.
Correct. The idea is being, we're doing that, we get it back, we shouldn't have to pay for that.
Again, I can't tell you the number of hours that Chuck Rand's worked on this. Chuck, thank you for a great amount of work on this and of course, the Georgia State Patrol unit going in the water system. We were the largest populated county without a driver services. So I know Charlie Watts and Howard Matshell worked very hard to make this happen. So I'm extremely happy about that.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add, just for clarification for the public, back in the day when a lot of us got our driver's licenses initially, we got them from what we all refer to as the state patrol. State patrol used to, you know, they drive trooper cars and they used to be in the business of issuing driver's licenses. That is no longer the case. There are two separate state government departments that do that. The Department of Public Safety operates the state patrol. We'll be getting a state patrol post over at the, over at the water system building. The Department of Driver Services, they issue driver's licenses. They will be building the facility here on this campus solely for the purpose of driver's license related issues. Two separate departments, they've split up what used to be combined.
Number ten, discuss action to adopt resolution fourteen dash twenty-six, authorizing a voter referendum on whether to allow package sales on Sunday by retailers of packaged malt beverages and. Mike, do you want to comment on this?
I will. And county attorney, if you want to chime in on this. I guess first, let me start by reading what the ballot question would actually say. The ballot question will read, shall the governing authority of Paulding County be authorized to permit and regulate packaged sales by retailers of malt beverages and wine on Sundays between the hours of twelve-thirty and eleven-thirty P.M.? So that, and your option is to vote yes or vote no. So this is what the ballot question would say. What it, for you is not whether or not you agree that malt beverage and packaged sales often occur, it's whether or not you agree that the public ought to have the option to decide for themselves. So we discussed this about two years ago, it's nearly two years ago this month. That was, the Board of Commissioners voted to allow that to go forward on a special election, which occurred on March nineteenth of twenty thirteen. Just slightly over two percent of the registered voters turned out for that vote. It was turned down. I'm satisfied you had as many calls as I had about the interest in having that question brought back up during a general election. As you know, we have a general election scheduled for Tuesday, November fourth of this year. There's no costs associated with placing this on the ballot, should you choose to do so.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify one item, when we deal with alcohol at the state or county level, we deal with really three kinds of alcohol. We deal with beer, wine, and distilled spirits. This is only for wine and beer. This does not cover distilled spirits. Paulding County is not a county that presently at the time illegally be in the business of regulating distilled spirits. They're not sold in the county. So this is beer and wine only.
Any other discussion? Number eleven, discuss an enhanced security upgrade project for the Silver Comet Trail with a not-to-exceed project budget of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars using recreational, sloshed funds. Mike, I believe, it was a group of us that met, you, Michael Justice, with Carson Recor- and Recreation, Sheriff Gullidge, Quinn, is it lieutenant?
Corporal.
Quinn, who is primarily responsible for the Silver Comet Trail. Uh, we've, we've been looking at this for quite a while, uh, to make upgrades, to digitize those cameras and get a better image of that park. Uh, I called Carolyn Delamont, and there's several million people that visit, uh, the Silver Comet Trail and are visitors to Paulding every year. So, uh, I think we need to do as much as we can to bring, uh, security up, uh, we had a lady that was attacked, uh, we have some leads, the sheriff's department's working on those leads, but, uh, if we can do more to bring safety to this area, uh, this is something that you can use splotched funds for. Uh, also, in the meeting, who else do we have that was in attendance?
Our IT director, Will Lyons, was present, Chuck Rand was present, and then when we went out on the field, if you're ready to join us, who was also one of the patrol officers of the trail.
You want to talk about exactly...
Certainly. Uh, what we did is, uh, after we, after we initially met, we laid out the 18-mile section of the trail and evaluated where utilities are present, particularly fiber was the most important, and secondary to that was the power. Um, and there was a seven-mile section of trail, which also coincided with the most heavily used section of trail. We currently have, uh, three, um, trailheads that are equipped with cameras today. Uh, we want to increase the camera locations from three locations to 21 locations, and we want to upgrade the cameras that are there to, um, high-resolution digital, and we're going to put about 47 of them out on the trail. This is all part of what we prefer to do as phase one. The trail itself is about 18 miles through Paulding County, this will take care of about seven miles of it. We want to do this quickly, we'd like to have this operational in the next 60 days. Uh, to accomplish that, we prepared a budget, uh, again, as the chairman pointed out, these are recreational splotched dollars that will be used to, uh, to enhance the security on the trail. Uh, we're requesting an operational budget of $275,000 to implement phase one. Should that be approved, we'll come back to you for phase two. It is a rough, rough budget, what we're looking, phase two is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $400,000. We'll know more when we do phase one to give you a better number, but phase two is several months down the road. Uh, phase two would allow the installation, um, of additional fiber along, along the trail, about five miles, um, seven new camera locations total, so we're going to extend the phase one to the east two miles towards the Cobb County line, and to the west three miles towards Mount Olive Road. So, so that's kind of an overview of the entire project. The IT department has worked this week, uh, to prepare a drawing of what that's going to look like, and I would invite you at the end of this, this work session to come take a look at that. It's, it's an aerial photo that specifically shows the locations. Those locations may change when we get out of jail, again, some of that's going to be predicated on access to power. Chuck Rand, our community development, or development services director, is currently working with power companies on calls and access for power to those cameras. The sheriff may have additional ideas, uh, he would like to make, uh, on the project, I'll leave those to him.
This is for the cameras only? This does not include the additional smart cars that, this, this number is for cameras only?
That's correct. $275,000 is, is the camera hardware and installation to make those cameras operational.
Okay. Now, to get it up and going in 60 days, will you go to a normal bid process, and can you, I mean...
That's a very good question. I, I, personally, I, I don't want to do that, I think that, not that we don't want to have competitive bidding, but I hope that there is a route that would limit the amount of time, but also accomplish the competitive bidding process of that. I don't know how to answer that question yet, I, I can't give you a straight answer.
And, and I guess the other question is, will there be a con, I mean, let's just say X, Y, Z company says, yeah, we'll put them all in for $275,000, will there be a contract that you will need us to approve? Is this actually giving y'all the authority to do this?
What, what we'd prefer is this afternoon at 2 o'clock, we would like for you to authorize the chairman to enter into a contract for up to $275,000 to keep this from having to come back. Now, phase two, we'll have a lot more time to work with, the phase one, we'd like to implement right away. We're still going to struggle with, with the bidding part of that. It may be that we end up having to bid it, but the idea is, is to reduce that time as much as possible.
I mean, you may do a request of, a bid by invitation.
Correct.
Instead of a more posting.
That's one option, uh, we've actually explored, purchasing, specking the hardware, the switches, and the cameras and cells, purchasing those, and then hiring out the labor, uh, and taxing them with installing the equipment that we purchased ourselves, so, I just don't know yet.
I just want to make sure, how, I mean, how are you going to accomplish it in 60 days?
Are, are any of these cameras on state country?
Uh, that's a good question, I, I don't know the answer to that. Uh, the cameras that we're looking at are very similar to the ones that we placed in, uh, Veterans Park here at the government complex, so we've, we've got some familiar area with them.
Mike, or Sheriff, can you speak to how they're monitored or if they're over there?
Uh, that's another unknown, they can be. Uh, we, we're able to pull up the cameras that are in Veterans Park today, so there's a way to log in from an iPad or a laptop and actually take a look at those cameras, you simply have to know which camera you want, and you can pull them up and monitor. Initial thought was, let's have these cameras monitored in places where we have security in place, whether that's a 911 or the existing courthouse. The sheriff has his own ideas on where that's going to go, we fully support that, the capability is there to have the monitor. I don't believe, unless the sheriff is going to contradict me, that the, that the idea is that they're going to be monitored 24 hours a day, that is not the goal of these, of these cameras at all. Uh, but certainly, the, the ability to monitor them exists.
Have you looked at maybe monitored anything in the smart cars that you have?
That's what I told them we started, I said, we can get laptops and the smart cars that deputies is actually out there, can pull them up on their laptops, and they can back away, and, I mean, why we got them to come out there, because they know where we had trouble with, they can back away from those that use the cameras to be eyes down the trail. Uh, a lot of people thinks, and they don't use the trail, thinks this is something you were starting. We've been working that trail for, ever since I've been the sheriff, I've had three decades of signing that trail, it's probably the most patrolled road in the county, it's 18 miles over, I have three deputies, and that's all they do is work that trail. I've got a lot of, I won't say criticisms, a lot of people making, giving me advice, you know, the cars are no good, you need to put bicycles out there, you know, the cars ain't any good, you need to get out there on golf carts. We have bicycles, we use some, but if you're at the higher trailhead, there's a problem at the tunnel, and it's 18 miles away from you, you're on a 14 mile an hour vehicle, you don't want to be over there waiting on us to get there, that's, that's where I originally come up with this idea for the cars. Of course, you don't want to go flying down the trail, but with a car that's licensed, you can get out on 278, which runs parallel to the trail, and you can bypass all the people, and you don't have to run them off the road and make everybody mad at you, and you get back on the trail where the problem is. Uh, the additional cars will help, uh, we have two out there right now. I think the cameras will help. I don't know that you can say that once the cameras are up, it's going to be a safe place to be, but I think people are like kids, they, they act better when they know who they're watching. So, as long as there's a chance, and it, it will not stop people from coming in from different, uh, places, but if they access the trail, uh, even back to this lady, we could at least have a timeframe of where she got on, where she went, we could also have a timeframe of anybody else that was looking at, did they come onto the trail, did they come onto the chamber, or did they come out of trails out of the woods? I don't know, some people's never been out there, there's all kinds of side trails coming out of these apartment complexes, out of trailer parks, out of housing projects, uh, there's trails coming out of subdivisions that's along the trail, there's all kinds of places, and, uh, Mike Quinn works out there day in and day out, and that's why we took him with us, and he said, this is a place where we've worked a lot, this is a place where we've had a lot of trouble, and those places, we've tried to put up some of these cameras. Uh, I told Mike I have no issue if they want to put the monitors in the courthouse, we have a, basically, a mini jail in the basement of the courthouse, there's a deputy there as long as the courthouse is open, they can monitor, they can put them in our control room at the jail, it's manned 24/7, uh, but the deputies in the cars, or they can pull them up on their laptops, I think it would be a grand thing for them to be out there to be able to see down the trail. No matter where they're sitting, they can skip all places down the trail and watch, and I think you can identify cars before they start, you can identify people that don't naturally belong out there. If you go out there, like we're dressed, you're going to get some funny looks. If you go out there running short shoes, you go out there in back, back in clothes, nobody really pays you attention, so, you know, they get on these cameras, and they say somebody don't fit in, they get took pretty quick.
I, I know you've been asked this before, and I, I, I think I know the answer, but do you have any update on the investigation?
Uh, nothing that I would talk about right now. Uh, there's a lot going on with it, we're chasing down, we're chasing every lead we can get, we're talking, this, we've got so much going on, it's probably not in public comment that I would make, we're chasing down everything we look at, uh, looking down everywhere there is. Uh, the bad part is, is right now, nobody's seen anything, nobody hurt anything, and that's where we're at. The media's driving a lot of people, I said, there's a lot, there's a lot of rights and benefits going on to make that money for this lady. I started a reward fund that if somebody could give us information, we could arrest and prosecute this person, uh, that fund yesterday evening was about $23,000. So, if anybody has any information regarding what happened on the trail, it'll call 770-443-3015, and ask for any investigator there, we'll be led to talk to you. We're, we're getting inundated with tips, and of course, you got to take them all down, and it's just time to send it to work.
We'll put that number, uh, on this video, uh, but if somebody wanted to contribute to that fund, how would they go back to it?
Uh, the bank of North Georgia, over on Metro Mont Road, uh, I talked to the manager there, and she set up an account, I talked to Jason before we done it, there's three different ways you can do it, there's a form when you come out, I had a lot of people, and I didn't understand why, that they wanted to make donations to it, but they wanted to remain anonymous, and I thought, why would they do that? And the lady that told me, she said, I want to put some money in the account, but if something happens, I don't want anybody to come after me or my family for trying to help catch them. I said, okay, I understand, and so we set up a form, you can come in and make an anonymous donation, there's three boxes on it, if you want your money returned after, well, I think we set a two-year deadline on if nothing's been done with the money, or if law enforcement catches them without the help of this fund. If, like a business, they say, they say, okay, if you, if you do that, we want our money back. I have a form, and I'll send you your money back as soon as I'm open with. There's also a box on there, you can check, that I don't want my money back, I want this money to go use for security for the trail, we can buy stuff for the trail for added security, and I thought, I'll give them another way to do it, it's our call for kids program, if you don't want your money back, you can check that box, whichever you prefer to do with the money, I'll either return it or put it in one of those two accounts.
Any questions?
Uh, one more thing, if you don't mind. I've had a lot of people ask me about the smart cars, uh, most people thinks it's a good idea, I took one myself and went out on the trail, and I interacted with people out there and make sure that they didn't have an issue with it. Uh, I, I didn't want to go out there and, those people out there on that trail, they own that place. We bought a street and trail lot one time, and I myself went out there, rode it, I got stopped three times, and got cut off for riding motorcycles on the trail, till they figured out who I was, and I said, you know, we're trying to use this, and they didn't lie. The smart cars, we went out there, you can, he's right up behind people, they're quiet, nobody really knows you're coming through, they don't bother anybody, everybody out there on the trail are used to our cars. Mike was with me, I had two different motorcycles come up and thanked us for being out there, he said, I ride the trail from Cobb, Paulding to Polk all the time, he said, every time I come through here, I see your guys. Uh, a lot of people are saying that we shouldn't be buying the cars, we shouldn't be using the light full of Kawasaki mules we used to have, and they're about the same price, and we was wearing two of those mules out of year, as Jim asked your fleet mate, and said, these things are not designed for what y'all are doing, we're running back and forth up and down the trail, and top speed was like 14 miles an hour. So, we bought the cars for about the same price, and Mike asked me, he said, well, how long are these cars going to last? I said, I don't know yet, we're still running. Uh, you know, everybody says, well, our key, well, so-and-so can't get them, me and Mike Jones, we got one and rode around, and I told Mike, I said, you get out on a four-lane, you run a 65 mile an hour, and he said, I don't go that fast, and then of course, you were going ahead and running, I said, Mike, I didn't think you want to go 65, and he's like, gee, this thing's pretty nice. Shelters don't touch, there's plenty of red in them, we've got cameras in them, just like in police cars, there's lights on them, uh, anything that you can look at.
Unlike you.
Unlike me. I have a base for it.
I have a question about Mrs. Wibell, uh, is she stable enough to be able to tell her story yet?
I, I won't go to the doctor, Parker, she has, those are shorty.
Can I ask one thing, Mike? The $275,000, since we're so pushed to get this done, is that enough, or do we, do you, do you need more of a bump, or?
Um, I think that's okay, I think we can get it done with that, um, we have about a 15% contingency to what we thought the actual dollar amount would be, based on our experience with installation in Veterans Park, I appreciate that, um, but I, I think the $275,000 will, will get us, um, if we do bid this out and it comes in higher than that, um, I intend to move forward with $275,000 worth of stuff, and I will come back to you immediately and, and ask for additional financial assistance, but I think we'll be okay.
Y'all will allow, also, I like to thank Chuck Rand and Mike Jones, Will Lyons, they spend a lot of time with us out there, and I've never come to them with a problem that they don't drop what you're doing and come and help me, I appreciate y'all guys for that, that means a lot to me. Uh, I've always been that way, but I've never come to them with a problem that they don't actually drop what you're doing and give them, but they're great guys to work with, uh, very knowledgeable, lots of experience, uh, I'm glad to be co-workers.
And for recreational splotched funds, uh, the capital expense, that this is exactly usual?
Yes, sir, correct.
Another thing I'd like to say, y'all have mine, I'm going to keep on talking, the three cameras that we have out there, and I don't, it's not really anything to say about at the time, they just put up their analog cameras, uh, we have people in here who've got a lot of business with cameras, analog cameras are basically useless, you can see people go by, but if David Barnett come walking by the trail in the daytime, and was, you could look at the thing and say, well, it's a tall white guy, but you can't look at the trail, that, that, feel what you've got in front of you and say, well, that's David Barnett. So, these digital cameras will change it when he comes by, so that's David Barnett, wearing glasses. Uh, the digital cameras have improved technology so much, uh, and I think it'll also give us eyes on the trail at night when we're having problems, we know where the problems are, we had a lot of people that's using the trail at night when they're not supposed to be out there, so now we, you know, from my home, I can get on the computer and look at these cameras, I think it'd be a great safety asset.
Because they go infrared.
You what?
They're infrared, uh, cameras for night vision.
Yeah, they, they'll switch over when the, when the lighting drops, they'll switch over to a black and white image, but the black and white image is incredibly sharp, so it, it doesn't take very much light, even full darkness, you can be able to see what's going on out there.
It really matters, we just like, we need to see that there's actually people moving on there, quicker than moving that, and we can hear it.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any, any other question?
Thank y'all for y'all's support.
That's the conclusion of a regular business session, there's no executive, uh, session. Uh, we do have Bill Gersky, uh, wishing to speak, if he'll come to lecture, uh, yeah, five minutes, and you want to talk about, uh, Sunday alcohol sales.
Yes, Sunday alcohol sales.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before Mr. Gersky begins, previously, I made a comment about this business item, I want to just clarify on it before I get a phone call, uh, indicated that the county does not regulate distilled spirits. We don't regulate distilled spirits when it comes to packaged sales, we do regulate distilled spirits when it comes to a viver by the drink, just wanted to make that clarification for, someone called me and told me I was wrong.
Thank you. Good morning, gentlemen. I was here recently, uh, my name is Phil Gersky, my family owns and operates Crossroads Grocery in Paulding County for over 15 years, and, uh, thank you for allowing me to come back again. Um, I came back today because today's a, a very special day. This afternoon, the commissioners will vote on whether they'll allow the agenda to have Sunday alcohol sales in November election. Half of what I was going to say, uh, Mike Jones covered very well, so I'll leave it briefer than I was going to be. As you mentioned, we're not voting on whether we're going to have it or not, but we're voting on giving the residents an opportunity to voice their opinion, and that's all they want. Um, I've talked to a lot of people in the county who merely want an opportunity to vote on whether they want it or not. Uh, I took the liberty to have a petition signed by over eight, or almost 800 people, in which they signed the petition, not saying they want it, but they like the opportunity. As was mentioned by Mike, last year in the special election, uh, eighty, excuse me, 98 and a half percent of the eligible voters didn't vote, there was 1,100 people that voted out of 81,000, and I have a petition of 800, had I had a little bit more time, my petition probably would exceeded the total number of people that voted on last year. Uh, I think the board has two big opportunities here, one to make people happy, and one to possibly create revenue, uh, making people happy by giving them an opportunity, that's all they want, to vote on it. As far as revenue goes, uh, every county that's surrounding Paulding, Paulding County, is allowing people to purchase these products on Sunday. All you merely be doing is allowing the same thing. This is a great opportunity to give something to the residents that not only costs you nothing, but also will you might increase your intake or your revenue. Listening to a lot of people speak in the last couple of meetings, everything that they're speaking... in the last couple of meetings, everything that they're speaking of is associated with money, tax money needed. And today, I don't think I'd want to be a commissioner, because a commissioner's job is much more challenging than it was twenty years ago. People today, as you well know, are very demanding. They want more services, better services, but they don't want to pay more taxes. By allowing these sales, you will have the opportunity to create more revenue through, these beverages, as they are sold on a Sunday, create about three percent revenue to the county. If you put the math to it, it'll come out to thousands of dollars of additional revenue you'll have to work with that you didn't have before. In closing, I'd just like to say that we, we like to keep Paulding County's sales and tax revenue here in the county where it belongs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the conclusion of our regular business session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion second. Our favor stay out. Thank you all for coming. We'll be back here at two o'clock.